Let me try counting this a minute on your head. Seeing as it's seven o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting of the Webster Township Planning Commission to work. If you're willing and able, please stand and join us in the side of the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, listeners, for coming. Thank you, public, for coming. Thank you to our speakers, who will get to later, for showing up. Thank you, Shree, for coming. In front of you, we have an agenda for this evening's meeting. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yeah, under 12, after Dr. Jessica Bain and Paul Buzzard. I'm sorry, did I hear him?
Mad, Mad.
Okay. M-A-E-A-T.
Thank you.
I have one more, too. 14A, section nine, ten.
Yes, I had that one myself.
What did you think?
Well, Paul.
Did that happen last?
I fixed it.
Are you sure? Ten, not twelve?
It's 12, not 14. It's 10. All the documents attached to the meeting packet are 10. Yes, and the key.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Have a motion to approve the minutes as amended and directed?
Go move.
Sorry. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is amended and corrected, is approved. Also in your packets tonight, you have the minutes from our last meeting, from June 15th. Are there any additions or corrections to that? Seeing none behind, have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 18th meeting. As a move to approve June 18th meeting minutes?
Certainly.
All in favor? Discussion? All in favor? To the five, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, minutes are approved from our June 18th meeting. Public comment? Peter, do you have anything tonight? I hope my question, I don't think it's too much of a idea.
Seems to be working. Peter Stevens, 75, by the track of claim. Just some general comments for the planning commission as you go forward, considering different application permitting and feeding processes for residents. I've had several conversations with residents over the past couple of years that have discussed with me how they've spent years and thousands of dollars to apply to try and do something with their land, only to be told that they can't. And what it seems like to me is people are spending a lot of time and money with the hopes of doing something, but being told they can't in the end. And it seems to me a process should be streamlined to the point where residents can get a lot of these applications and documents submitted without huge cost to them, even if it's a simplified process. And get to the point where they know that they can get a return on this investment that they're trying to do with their land and their property. And that's one of the fundamental freedoms of living in the United States, is we get a piece of property that's our own and we can kind of do what we want with it, as long as we're not hurting others. And it's getting harder and harder to get a permit in Webster Township, and it is getting harder and more expensive when you do, or to even try and get there in the first place. So even something like with this compliance permit that you'll be reviewing this evening, if that process gets longer and there's more permits, more things to submit, and the application fees, it's just an additional cost for residents that doesn't seem to be adding any benefit to their lives. So I would just ask the planning commission, as the board suggested last night, there's a lot of people tightening their belts, we may have to in a couple of years as a township. I would just hope that the planning commission could be mindful of the residents having to do the same and trying to make their lives a little bit easier and less expensive. Thank you.
Since there's nobody else in the public ready to comment, close the public comment portion of this evening's agenda. Shree, to the five, your report, please.
I think I've been hearing quite a few single-family home permits lately, streaming pools and deaths have increased quite a bit. Other than that, I think ZBAs quite busy lately as well. They've been meeting quite a bit and having more than one item on their agenda. It's mostly non-conforming expansions or dimensional variance related to non-conforming sites. I think other than private roads amendment, it's going, as I think we'll probably talk a little bit more on it during board meeting amendment, that we did, the board did approve a resolution to put a moratorium on any new road permit applications. If the application has to do with a law that's friendly on a non-compliant shaped right of your private road. This moratorium was put in place to give, to allow us to have focused discussion on private roads, rather than trying to address challenging, unique situations when the ordinance is not clear enough to address those situations. We do have a special board meeting on August 12th, or I think I'm probably stating just under. Getting into the board's summary, but. Oh, the stormwater management amendment and NFIS amendment have been published, and they are effective as of today. So we will soon be updating the zoning ordinance word document and distributing the replacement sheets for your ordinance books. I've also included a flyer in the packet for Parks and Rec. Please spread the word, get your friends and family to complete their survey online. There might be an open house most likely on August 28th, or first week of September. We're going to discuss that at the Parks meeting on August 14th. Sorry. Other than that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to expand on those items.
More members, any questions, please?
Do you give us a copy of Shaw's email? Is there a way we can get a copy of his spreadsheet as well? Who's Shaw?
Oh, I think after a little bit of internal discussion, it was decided that the spreadsheet is probably only for board's eyes, because they are the elected members and planning commission members are residents as well. If any of the investigations are ongoing, then the information is not a public record until the investigation is closed.
Where did that information come from? You said you talked to people. Who did you talk to?
Oh, attorney and attorney only. Not random people. I checked with an attorney.
So our attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I think the whole people can be anything, but yes, our attorney, to be specific, yes.
I have a question. I'm looking at page two of your report, down under other tasks, and I'm reading that, I think I understand that you're a bit overloaded. And I see you refer to the table above and maybe some prioritization discussion. So I have a question.
Okay.
Could, I think this is good, because it's ordinances and no matter who's working on them, but my question is, could we add section 1615? Because the planning commission chose that to work on as one of our two priorities for the master plan, but we haven't started it yet. And then, if we do that, I think all the planning commission ordinances that we know about are listed here, so it would be complete if you're going to use this for prioritization. So I think in the second category, amendments in the pipeline for the PC, it could be listed there as we selected, but we haven't started yet. It was also mentioned in our annual report.
There's another one that's coming back to us from the board, and that's this news and orders, which is not listed here.
Yeah, for the PC, it's down below under requirement amendments, I'll move it up.
Yeah, I mentioned it, there are lists.
Otherwise, I think it's a good list, it gives a good overview, and we can make sure it's complete.
Shree, when you're talking to the board about this, and I realize it's something that hasn't happened yet, but we know here, the board does too, things get thrown in unforeseen things, like somebody comes in with a siphon or something. I assume that's going to be part of the discussion, and if so, will we be advised if your priorities change when we're not involved in that approval?
So the task prioritization I was referring to in my memo is more towards board's tasks, not so much focus on the zoning amendments per se, but more about private roads, license from based occupation that they have to look into and just general policy decisions with regards to public engagement, or fee schedules, or enforcement strategies, or other items where we, that they've been trying to look into, or setting the basis for their budget document for next year. So it was more like an overall policy-based prioritizations. You, planning commission has your own set of prioritizations, which you look into. That is intact, that is not being proposed to change. This is just for the board to figure out, because they only meet once a month, and it's not fair I take up all that time. I'm sorry, I don't know why the joke. But yeah, it's more for the board to figure out, because everybody has a different goal. Some, a couple of the board members are talking about, you know, website upgrades or management upgrades. It's just them trying to figure out what it takes. Parks and Rec master plan's coming up, they have to make decisions about matching that.
A follow-up question, so if it's about your time and you've been involved in non-planning and zoning activities, would a question for the board meeting to identify someone else to take down those things?
Oh, no, no. I just was putting it out there, I will not. So I know it's confusing, I'm glad you, we were putting it out there as a placeholder, because Mike has been talking to board members to talk about prioritization. I only offered help to facilitate the meeting. My primary focus is planning and zoning.
Okay, so you're not overloaded.
No.
They want to prioritize their, I think.
Yes, thank you. No, planning and zoning is my thing.
I have two other questions, and I asked these offline, but since we approved one of them.
Yes.
How are our friends of La Fontaine doing on doing their grass cut?
So we did open enforcement on that one, because it's a site plan enforcement, I think that I can share the information. We did open up our enforcement ticket on them, we sent them first notice, we contacted with Rachel, who was the primary face of La Fontaine during the communications, and there were some pointing fingers going around, and then finally said, we don't care, we want that to be cleaned. And we told them that we're not going to close the ticket after they clean the site for the first time, we're going to keep it open and keep tabs on them, you know, regular basis, at least until we know that they're caught, they're filling your pattern on keeping it clean.
So they just need to sell a few more progress to afford the guy to cut their ass?
Yeah. You said, I told my manager to take care of it, manager like, I told them. But we got their attention.
Any other things for Shree this time? Thank you very much. Yeah? Do you have anything to say now that Shree is gone?
I do. So last night, we had our annual audit report, that turned out very well. Parks and Rec committee had three new appointments, John Westman, Dina Marie Zemke, and Margaret Mosi were appointed. We had variants for the Wheeler Road, Mr. Wheeler, he was approved, this was just to get started, so he could get some of his other stuff done without actually having this in place. Scully Road, there was an exception, or exception was filed with us, that was approved with some conditions, and, well, eight condition. As you asked today, the resolution for adopting private roads moratorium, that passed, that's on a 90-day moratorium right now, and that will be coming off October 13th, or we're going to have to readdress it. So hopefully we can get it hammered out in place by then. Let's see, we talked about sirens, still looking at possibly doing it, there's some thoughts that it's old technology and the upkeep cost of it is too much. And there's other people that are saying, we don't always have cell phones, so we're looking at possibly doing selected ones, different areas. I don't, what they showed us was absolute blanket coverage, is what they suggested, and I don't think that's. But I do think that there may be, we may have an option of some strategic placement of them, that will cover most of the township. And looking at other townships around us where they have them adjacent to our borders, so, because you could, a lot of them, you could hear, I could hear it when they set up the ones over in Dexter now.
Oh, I can too, yeah.
Yeah.
They probably can too, yeah.
So I mean, there's a question of whether or not they have to be as close or as saturated as. But we're still looking at that, and it may go. Let's see. Bill has asked for website upgrade suggestions, so if you guys look at our website, and we're in the process of possibly reconfiguring some of that, so please take a look at it. If you have any suggestions of things that make it easier, let Bill know.
That's Bill Sinclair.
Bill Sinclair, yes. And as Shree had pointed out, we do have on August 12th, it looks like we're going to have a special meeting to talk about private roads. Should be seven AM, seven PM, seven PM.
It's too late for me.
I like it. That's really about it, I think.
Sorry, I'm putting that into my calendar, so I don't miss it. Great, any questions on the board meeting last night? Seeing none? Rick, anything going on with ZB?
We have not had a meeting since our last meeting, but we have two requests for variants coming up on August, I think it's the 14th.
13th.
The 13th? The 13th, we have two requests for variants.
And then the other one was, is coming back, Jean Ratliff. You know, the dimensional variants, we said to go back to the county and get the setbacks checked, she's coming back. It's going to be a big meeting.
Three?
Yes.
Oh, that would be quick. Any questions on ZB request or report?
Was that going to be at 7:00 AM or 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. I prefer 7:00 AM, you're, you're chickens anyway, so.
That's what I mean, that's private time for me.
I'd rather not do it.
Do we have any reports on PDR, any representative?
The minutes should be there.
There are the minutes in here, but I didn't know.
No, because we don't have it represented if you had, I just started including the minutes.
No, I do want to, for the PDR stuff, though, I'd like to bring up, there was some discussion last night just about, there was a reduction in the nature of the service funds coming from the government.
Right, that's why.
And that's going to affect PDR and some of the other stuff in the county.
Was there, I had left at that point.
Yeah.
Was there any discussion about the belt typing slash PDR slash addition opener?
No, there's stuff in.
I just wanted to very loudly to show up at one of those meetings and go, hey, here's the ramifications.
Yeah, I don't think the numbers are in yet.
Okay.
As I said, that a lot of the stuff from that bill isn't, isn't really going to take effect until after midterms, so. So we won't know for another year really what the full effects.
How many did you already? Okay, oh, any questions of what PDR report there was? Okay, would you, anything in the natural nature committee?
We have also not had a meeting since the last time the planning commission met. We meet on Monday next week.
Thank you. Any questions, okay, before we move to our special guest for the evening? Seeing none, I'd like to introduce two people, one of whom we've talked with about before through Paul. Her name's Jessica Bain, and she is an expert, as I'm told by your father, on animal nuisance and care. And in addition to her, we have another special guest who is added to the schedule a few days ago, Mr. Buzzard. So in front of you, you have their bios. I won't bother to read them until being minutes. They seem to be, like, people who know what they're talking about, or what's in the bios. And plus, they have, they have physical age, so that's always a hot point. And we also have in our packets handouts from both their presentations. With that, is there anything you'd like to say? Introduce yourself to several masters.
I have that on my next slide.
Okay.
More to introduce myself a little bit more. So I am Jessica.
By the way, you were, you're late, you have to stay up all around the room for your time. She didn't have that before you.
This is my exercise.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you very much for coming tonight.
So as you said, I'm Jessica Bain, I am a veterinarian, I graduated from Michigan State University, my EVM and my Masters of Public Health. I've been practicing as a general mixed animal veterinarian for 11 years. At this point, I work on about 50/50 of companion animal species like dogs and cats, and livestock species, primarily horses, cattle, swine, sheep, goats, and camelids like llamas and alpacas. I have also worked in some more species like cat of servants and camels and bison. I particularly have an interest in small ruminant medicines, so the sheep goats, llamas and alpacas. And through all of this, I have also experienced with animal welfare cases, mostly being contacted with local law enforcement to come out and evaluate welfare cases from a veterinarian's perspective. So I don't have specific law training or anything like that, but I've often provided medical opinion on the welfare of animals in those situations. I've also provided veterinary service to rescues that have surrendered or confiscated livestock from those situations to evaluate those livestock. I'm not affiliated with any local animal control, and I'm not affiliated with the state of Michigan, I'm just a private practitioner. In addition to my experience as a veterinarian, I've also raised llamas for 25 years, and I'm currently the vice president of the Michigan Llama Association. I've also raised sheep for five years, and I grew up raising and joining chickens, so I have a variety of experience, both on the medical side as well as on the producer side. Tonight, I'm going to be talking particularly about animal welfare and livestock species, and then we'll also talk about some livestock containment and stocking density related to how the number of animals within that containment. My partner up here, he's going to be talking, the conservation technician is going to be talking more about the impact of indoor management and animal disposal and that impact on the environment, so we'll do that next. When we're evaluating animal welfare from a veterinarian's perspective on a farm or on a residence, there's a few different policies that are available through the state that we have to abide by. There's the Animal Industry Act, which is primarily there to establish the state veterinarian, as well as health certificate requirements, any disease testing that needs to be done when animals are imported into the state or traveling off of their property. The Michigan Right to Farm Act maintains development adherence to generally accepted agricultural and management practices for GAMS, which is more commonly known. These are science-based standards of animal care and infant various livestock species. Even if you have animals on a property that don't necessarily become covered by the Michigan Right to Farm Act, GAMS is still a really good reference for some of those basic standards of care. And coincides very closely with what we evaluate when we go out as a veterinarian perspective. There's also a variety of animal cruelty statutes that could provide for regulation regarding intentional infliction of pain and suffering, the duty to provide care to those animals, and cruelty related to the transportation of livestock. And whether that's companion animals or livestock species, they all fall under those statutes. When I go out as a veterinarian to evaluate animal welfare, there's two things I'm primarily looking at, are the basic needs of those animals being met, and those are adequate food, adequate water, adequate shelter. That can all vary significantly based on animal species, the productive stage of that animal, whether it's a lamb, or whether it's an adult, as you see in those pictures, whether they're being raised for meat or fiber, whether they're in a reproductive status, all of those different things can vary, what those basic needs are going to be. And then I also evaluate the livestock condition, so basically the physical health of that animal, whether there's a presence of disease, as well as the body condition, or the, whether they're thin, or whether they're overweight, things, things like that to evaluate their general health. When I see or am involved with cases of neglect, most commonly it's due to inexperience with that livestock species, or financial hardship, or in some cases, animal hoarding, and sometimes those things go together. Sometimes with an experience with the livestock in general, producers may be unaware of the space requirements, or the available markets, or getting, moving unwanted animals off of their property, so then you end up with perceived animal hoarding situations. Or you end up with financial hardship because the cost of keeping that many animals on their property, you know, out cases what they're available to do. So those things can all kind of go in hand in hand. There's very rarely a situation where animals are intentionally harmed in the cases that I've been involved with. Those are the main things that tend to be the cause of cases of neglect. One thing to keep in mind when you go out to evaluate situations is there's also a perception on what the standard of care may be in the eyes of the general public. So if you have production animal versus a pet, and that could be the same species, a pet rabbit might be perceived differently from a market rabbit, and how those animals are cared for by one individual versus another. So sometimes in those cases where we're called out to evaluate animals that really are being adequately cared for, but then in the eyes of a holder, maybe not. So sometimes that situation can come up as well. So the first thing that I typically evaluate is going to be whether those animals are provided with adequate food. Most livestock species are requiring two to three percent of their body weight in dry matter daily. And again, kind of depends on the productive status of that animal, whether they're like a weather or a castrated goat versus a breeding horse or something that's gonna greatly vary what that, that percentage is, but that's a general average. It's often unrested by inexperienced owners. So for example, a thousand pound horse requires twenty to thirty pounds of dry matter daily. Fresh grass is usually sixty, eighty percent water, and dry is ten to fifteen percent water. And people don't realize how much that poundage can really be when it adds up. So they may have created a lot to feed fresh grass, thinking, oh, this, this animal's gonna be brought in with adequate grass, and it's gone within a week, because they just don't appreciate the volume that those animals are gonna be consuming. Most livestock species are designed to eat forages, so that should be the main part of the diet. For some, if market animals, that can be a little bit different when we're really pushing for gain, uh, and the protein to fat composition, what you're looking for in a market carcass is gonna be a little bit different. But in general, forages are the primary source. So just because a person is not feeding grain to their animal does not mean they're not adequately fed. If they're meeting requirements with forage, for urban forage animals, that can be adequate. Swine and poultry are some exceptions to the general livestock because they're omnivorous. Uh, but that doesn't mean they have to be getting grain. If they're out on pasture, they might just be eating insects and other things that come across in the pasture. So those animals can be adequately cared for in those situations as well. And the National Research Council, or NRC, provides guidelines for nutrient requirements of livestock. So that can be a good reference if there's a situation where you need that information. And it does cover different production stages of different livestock species. These are just some pictures that kind of show the two, um, ranges we can see. So on the left are, here's hay could be fed inside, it can be fed outside, and you could have grass pasture. All of those animals are receiving adequate feed. Um, but we do have to keep in mind that some species like goats do not like rain. So if you feed hay outside, they may stay inside and essentially starve themselves, and that can cause health issues. So that's sometimes some things that I have to address when I go out there. Uh, for example, my llamas don't like going in rain, so they get hay inside when you're fed hay. The sheep don't care, so they'll eat outside. On the right side, you can see some situations where, um, I may have come into evaluate, uh, an animal welfare case. So the snow-covered ground, that's where a hay bale used to sit. And typically, if you're feeding a round bale, even if it's out there, there should be residue left behind when you're replacing it. In this case, there's very little there. It's mostly just trampled ground and manure. So those animals have been going without food for quite a while, but taking clean anything they can possibly find. Um, the bottom quarter with the chickens, you know, when they're outside, that's great. But when you evaluate anywhere, there's no actual feed in any of their pen, either inside or outside. So lack of, lack of food in that situation. And that can come from that inexperience of, well, I go out and I throw grain to my chickens every couple, or a couple times a day. Well, that doesn't necessarily match with the nutrient requirements those chickens are needing, or the way that they typically, um, eat throughout the day. So just how those birds are being managed doesn't quite meet their needs. The other image of the sheep and the llama is just an example of, um, that what we're raising that can happen wasn't helpful, so the grass wasn't growing, they had hay inside anyway. But this is an example of animals being out with the expectation they're gonna need grass and survive on it, and there's really not adequate forage for them. And then adequate water, uh, just making sure there's frequent or free access to a source of clean water. Uh, in general, a gallon for a hundred pounds body weight is a good estimation of water requirements. Again, that can vary depending on production status and species, but that's a good average. When some producers are utilizing natural sources of water, there's some points to consider with bodies of water, like rivers or ponds. You have to consider contamination of those water sources by manure, erosion of the ground from trampling, because the majority of our livestock species are hoofed, um, that can also lead to soil compaction. As well as exposure to contagious diseases, there's things like plactus ferocis that can, um, be contagious between wildlife and livestock. Some, um, people will justify that snow can be an adequate source of water. That really can only be usable for short periods of time. Um, for example, if the water froze for the day, but then you got out and replaced it, that might be okay. But to go days on it with only snow as a source is not gonna be considered adequate. Um, and that's because on average, ten gallons of snow is equivalent to about one gallon of water. So if you consider a thousand pound horse and how much snow they have to consume to meet their energy or to meet their water requirements, it, it just gets to be rather extreme. And then also keeping in mind that cold snow requires increased metabolic energy to lower the temperature, or to raise the temperature of that snow to body temperature. So it's gonna increase their feed requirements, um, to compensate for that difference. And I think most of us know what good water buckets and things are gonna look like. So these are some examples of, um, problems. The one on the left there would be a water trough that was left frozen. And the horses that were supposed to get water from this were literally licking a hole, their muzzle shape down to try to find water. Um, the one in the middle had, uh, that has a de-icer in it, but it has very little water, so the de-icer doesn't actually work because it doesn't have enough water to cover the coils. And then on the right, there we have a horse that's eating snow as a water source. And you can see how the ground is rather trampled, so there's just not gonna be adequate snow provided for that horse over a period of time. Lastly, it's gonna be shelter when we're looking at basic needs. Um, and as far as shelters go, it can be very, very variable based on species, um, the environment that they're in, the production status. So in general, we must provide protection from sun, wind, rain, and other inclement weather. This could be, um, provided with barns, clean tubes, windbreaks, woodlots. Uh, kind of again, depends on the species. Keeping in mind that windbreaks need to be appropriately placed to, um, apply to the wind that's in that area. I have a case, which I have a picture a little bit later, where maybe you said there's a windbreak and trees are on the east side of the fence. So, not really helping with west, uh, wind coming from the west as was general for that area. Need to make sure there's space to accommodate all animals comfortably. Again, that can vary a little bit, and that's where camps may be beneficial, uh, for particular species. Appropriate footing for the species, again, most of our livestock species are hoofed. And so ice in particular can be very detrimental to their health. And making sure that, that is not accumulating where they are trafficking. Uh, and then adequate ventilation is also very important, especially in winter months where manure may accumulate because of, um, less travel outside or utilizing a pack for manure. Uh, that can potentially cause health issues for the animals as well as the orders of producers. Here's some examples of adequate shelter, um, so anywhere from, you know, we're not looking at appearances when it comes to shelters when we're evaluating animal welfare cases. So, like the barn all the way on the right, it could be very nicely, uh, you know, painted and everything, or it could have older metal on it, it's still providing adequate shelter. So when it comes to visual appearances, that's less important from a veterinarian perspective. Um, you could have, uh, three-sided shelter, it could be adequate as it's in the top middle picture. You could have a longer barn that's open all the time, like the bottom middle picture. You could have, uh, tar-covered loop barns, like in the bottom left. Um, that's providing adequate shelter. You can't really tell as well, but one end is up against a barn. So that way, there's, um, a covered end on that side. And then the top left, um, many people may look at them like, well, that's not gonna provide adequate shelter for, for the winter, which is true. But that producer was utilizing that for pigs that they were raising for forage. So they only have them from about April through August when that fair was. So that's providing adequate ventilation, protection from sun and rain. And then in the winter months when the pigs weren't there, they used it for storing, um, tractors and equipment like that. So, have to keep in mind that environment that you're protecting the livestock from at the time as well. And then these are some cases where, uh, sufficient shelter is not provided. So on the, the two left pictures there are those chickens, uh, which they did have shelter. But as you can notice from the interior picture, there's no sort of bedding within the shelter. Um, many of those chickens had frostbite in toes because they were here in the snow, or they were on, uh, an interior shelter without bedding. So even though they were being protected from environmental elements, cold was not accounted for in that particular setup. And then in the top middle picture, um, it's harder to tell with the lighting, but that's, uh, an ice-slipbed bottom of that barn with humps of manure. Um, so that's a situation where it was spelled because it was on ice. Um, and then a lot of those boards have nails sticking out of them. So again, not safe order, um, in, in many different ways for that particular species. And then the rightmost picture is what I was talking about, a windbreak, um, for trees, but that were located on the east side of the pasture, which was not providing any windbreak for the west winds that were coming in. So those are those basic needs I mentioned, and then looking at condition of the livestock. So we evaluate the presence of disease, um, whether they're identified appropriately, especially if they're being moved off property. If those animals are staying on property for the entirety of their lives, they were born there, they reside there, they don't have, they don't need identification. But if they were purchased, or came in, or are gonna leave to go do shows, or to be sold, they have to have appropriate identification. And then also appropriate testing for any movement off of property, and that varies by species. One important thing we look at is body condition. And that involves hands-on, in that case, you look at these two sheep, one is fat and one is thin. You really can't tell without feeling underneath that, that fiber. And that's where we have some issues with inexperienced owners that don't realize they need to touch their animals in the winter months to evaluate their body condition and things like that. When we're evaluating livestock containment, fences can vary. We could be here for hours talking about appropriate fencing. Um, so just, uh, in general, fences are one of two things. They're either a physical barrier, or they're a mental barrier. So in these pictures, uh, in the top middle there, you can see that's a wire fence. It's a physical barrier compared to down with that picture of the pigs. That fence is only about a foot and a half tall. Um, it's made of fiberglass posts and twine, and electro-twin. If you don't have it electrified, those pigs could pull right through it. There wouldn't be any sort of physical barrier for them. But as soon as you electrify it, it becomes a mental barrier. Both of those things are considered adequate for containment, as long as they're maintained appropriately. Depending on what species you're trying to contain, you're gonna have different types of fencing. So if you look at the sheep in the bottom, uh, middle there, they have wire fencing compared to the pony that's next, in the picture next to them. If you put those sheep in with the pony, they'd be right underneath that fence. So you have to make sure you're using adequate fencing, depending on the species you're containing. And then you also need to make sure the fences are adequate to deter predators. Uh, again, that pony there, dog could easily run underneath there. Uh, for horses, that is generally less of a concern just because of the size of the species. But if you've had sheep in there, dogs could run in there, if you have dog attack situations. Or coyotes or roxers, whatever species this is, is where we're preying on that. When we have fences that fail, it leads to predation of livestock, destruction of property, injury to the livestock, and injury to people. Most of the time when we have, uh, failing offenses, it's because it was inappropriate for the species, particularly gates, whether to keep a predatory species out or to keep our livestock species in. That tends to be, uh, the most commonplace for failure. It may be because of poor installation, maybe posts, um, were not driven in deep enough, or, um, inappropriate, uh, attachments were made for the fencing, or you may have deterioration of, of posts or things like that. You may have failure of mental barriers, because if you don't have a charge on electric, electric fence, it's not gonna be a mental barrier, and it's not a physical barrier. Or you may have natural disasters like trees falling, flooding, things like that. As far as stocking density goes, what that means is the number of animals per acre. Adequate stocking density varies significantly by the species, your production goals, containment season, and infant. Those two, those two pictures there have much different stocking densities and are consequently gonna be maintained differently. They both can be adequate, uh, it just depends on how those animals are managed. And the bottom picture, you could have a hundred acres and you still keep that many goats on too. So stocking density applies to the acreage that those animals are on, on the total acreage owned by the farm. And when it comes to stocking density, you really have to consider the hoof impact. Uh, I have found this statement in a research study, and I really liked, um, kind of how they stated it. But the hoof impact of livestock tends to cause the collapse of the larger soil pores, thus forming more small pores, increasing soil density and soil penetration resistance to root, water, things like that. This favors soil compaction, consequently enters the regrowth in the middle of the pasture and reducing productivity. I think I'll be talking about that a little bit more here. Um, higher stead, duck, stocking density, um, leads to compaction of soil and decreased vegetation regrowth, and increases your risk of water runoff, is basically the summary of that statement. So some management considerations for when you have higher stocking density should be utilizing, um, winter dry lots when the ground is frozen, and then having those animals out in a larger acreage of summer pasture. You may use gravel or concrete for high-traffic areas. For example, in that little layout, you use rotational grazing, and you have alleys, and those are grappled, um, so that when those animals are walking between pastures over the same area, they're not causing the same compaction that they would otherwise. And then also considering how manures need to collect when you have those higher stocking densities. Manure working well may be as a pack, so like particularly in winter months, um, some producers will, rather than cleaning out daily, when it's more difficult in our winter weather, apply more straw, more sawdust, or whatever the bedding of choice is on top of the manure to maintain dryness and, um, fly control. But he's not, they're not actually removing the, the manure until certain months when that whole pack is removed at one time. They may use cement dry lots, and that would result in frequent scraping or removal to maintain adequate, um, environment for those animals. And then what they're doing with that manure, are they storing it, or are they composting it? Is it being spread from, maybe they're just loading it into a manure spreader and spreading it out fields? Maybe it's being bagged or sold off-site. Uh, and depending on how they're managing that manure and storing it, you have to consider air quality while it's within the livestock containment, so in the barn with those packs. If you're not keeping it dry enough, you're gonna end up with air quality and ventilation issues. Uh, and then also while it's stored, um, if it's, you have residences downwind, and whether that's caused by nuisance as far as the smell goes. A lot of the time I encounter an experience with just the sheer volume of manure that's produced by different species. I've got a, a graph there, a lot of people may acquire, you know, dairy feeder, a hundred fifty pounds, you know, it's thirteen pounds of manure a day. By the time that, that feeder gets to be five hundred pounds, you're up to forty-three pounds of manure a day. And once you're up to, you know, eleven hundred pounds steer, you got eighty to ninety pounds of manure a day. So just the sheer volume is sometimes, uh, when you don't have that experience with those large animals, you just don't realize what's gonna accumulate and what you have to dispose of. So I put a few resources up here. There's multiple veterinarian associations, um, that have kind of basic standards of care from a veterinarian perspective. So the American Veterinary Association, and then Association of Bovine Practitioners, Small Ruminant Practitioners, E-Prime Practitioners, Flying Veterinarians. There's programs like the Beef Quality Assurance that producers can take to become trained, um, and certified to ensure cattle are properly cared for and the safety and insurance product is provided to consumers. And then there's also, as we're gonna hear about, the Michigan Agriculture and Animal Protection Assurance Program that can provide a lot of standards for, uh, protecting the environment from agricultural practices.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Bain?
I have a question. Um, so when, when you start talking about accumulation of manure, and obviously, it can be used as fertilizer, there's lots of things that you can use it for. But if you run out of those sources, let's say somebody says, all right, I've had enough manure, I don't need anymore for a while, what is, what's an option for getting rid of it? Where can they take it? I, I mean, it's like garbage, you can take stuff to the dump, but what do you do with excess manure?
Think you're talking about related to that, or?
Um, potentially, but, uh, you could answer me, you, you.
Yeah, so, that can be hard, and that's where knowing what you're going to be getting into can be beneficial. So I mean, composting on site can have a lot of benefits. It's gonna reduce the size drastically as them manure composts. And then you can utilize it yourself, or a lot of, um, even once it's composted, a lot of gardeners will purchase it. They don't want straight manure, they want it composted first. So it's somewhere, somewhat forward planning on the, um, part of the producer, just knowing, how am I gonna dispose of this? Um, I don't have. I don't have a good answer as far as like, this is going to work every time, for once you have that accumulation there.
So let's say that the owner was going to go towards composting, and say, all right, I've got excess manure, which, I mean, obviously, that's a good use of it. What, I mean, is that mixed with filter, topsoil, I mean, what are, what would you do in that particular case? Obviously, rotate it in and do all the other stuff.
Like, well, how would you?
But like, what kind of mix would it be? What would you do for something like that? If you were a local?
I'd do, I'd do, it'd be nice to have, you know, the kind of green ground, the ground manure, then guard waste, some kind of green stuff on top, kind of a mix, or hay, straw, wood chips. That's the ideal mix, get that nice kind of carbon nutrient ratio, make a good, the best compost.
And wood chips would be an option to do that?
Yeah, if you like, and it's great to do for owners, which I'll get into, that's a great, a great, you know, wood chips, wood over hay or straw, or leaf residue, or leaf stuff like that, that's a way to make a good compost. And then it's turning, it's all, there's a whole, we actually provide, we write videos that all, the video is cool, or about composting techniques out there.
And Michigan State extension also provides some educational materials regarding that too. I know for our farm, we do a pack, because I talked about, we do a pack. So our manure is kind of composting within the barn. We utilize straw, and then kind of pile it on top of the manure to maintain it being dry. Then we remove it all at one time, and put it in one big pile that gets turned. When I'm removing manure from, because llamas have communal poop piles, so it unfortunately doesn't get spread around like the sheep do. So I clean up those poop piles, I usually mix it in with like leaves in the fall, when I'm raking up leaves, or grass when we're growing in the spring. If we do have wood chips, yeah, I can throw those in there, and if I just don't have those things, I go and buy straw and add it to it, because ultimately, it'll make good compost.
And then composting manure, that's a good heat source in the barns, actually.
Yeah, the manure pack, it's surprising for a three-sided shed, when you have a manure pack, how warm it is in there. Like, you have body heat from the animals, but then the manure compost itself is also generating heat from all that microbial activity.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have some questions for Dr. Bane?
I have a question about the manure. If someone has a small farm, and they have different kinds of animals, can the manure from one kind of animal give health problems to other animals?
Like, they're sharing, do you mean by sharing the pasture, or? So it depends a little bit on the species. The biggest thing there would be parasites. For example, sheep and goats, llamas and alpacas, they will share the same parasites. So if you, with those higher stocking densities, one of the risks that you run into is then parasites accumulating within that pasture containment system. So that's more benefit of the dry lots that you saw with the goats, with that number of goats, it would be hard to have enough pasture to rotate adequately, and that's where you'll see a lot of feedlot situations, because to avoid the environments where parasites would reproduce, but you still have a good environment for those animals. So that's, that's the main thing that you would have, risk of spread. There's not a lot of other diseases that are going to transmit in the manure between species. Parasites would be the main thing. You might have like salmonella, you have the coli, but that, you're really not going to have infection of healthy animals, that's mostly with young stock, and you can see that with the same species versus other species.
Anybody else? I have other questions, aside from the manure, because I only have a dog, and I can answer that. How are you advised of the need to go review of an animal's situation, whether it's mixed or a particular species? Like, do you advertise, or is there like a card read, it's on the bulletin board, you go, hey, we need to call Dr. Bane, you know, we've got a guy here with a sick sheep?
Well, if, yeah, if it's something where it's just like a health situation, looking for veterinarians, a lot of times they'll go, and they'll find us. As far as like a welfare situation, most often I'm contacted by local law enforcement. Our clinic in jungle is contacted, it's not necessarily be specifically. And that's usually a report from another citizen, or there was a situation where a horse was being boarded at a location, and there was a lot of stuff with that one, but the people didn't realize the condition the horse was under until they showed up, and then they called us. That was complicated. But most of the time, it's going to be local law enforcement contacting us.
So they get the association ID specifically?
They call our clinic, our veterinary clinic, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask more questions? Are you or your clinic available for consultation? Not on an animal's per se, but if we get into an orphaned situation, like we have engaged GAMS, and Michigan State Extension, and so forth, but every once in a while, we have a question, can we reach out to you and pay a dollar and a half or something? I don't know whether we can pay it, I don't, but I mean.
Yeah, if it's, yeah, like something that can be consulted over the phone, you can reach out and ask. If it's something where you really need to be on site, the distance is probably going to become a factor in that situation, I recommend reaching out to a local veterinarian area.
Where are you located?
I'm located at that over there.
Oh, that's a high.
Yeah.
It's nice over there.
It is nice, yeah.
I have another question. I have seen on YouTube videos, in preparation for other things we've talked about, using manure or to produce methane on farms, contain the methane, and use it as a heat source or a power source. Is that something that you've seen around here, are farmers getting on board with those technologies, or are we living like in the 17th century still?
Most of those operations are very large, so you're going to be looking at more commercial farms. I have seen they use on theories, where you're talking about a lot of manure, but on a small scale, it's not really applicable.
The theory is that Manchester trying to get a biodegester.
Yeah.
Built in Manchester?
Outside Manchester, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mostly know the one that's in Michigan State. I don't think there's any that's.
Well, those are the only questions I have. Thank you.
I do have a question pertaining to some of the verbers that you're using in your thing, such as adequate, okay? And since we're looking at ultimately our nuisance organs, combined with our new care of animals organs. Your experience with the court system, how are judges looking at, we'll just use the word adequate? And I, let's funnel over to Child Protective Service right now, for state of Michigan, right? Is, some people believe they should feed their kids proper nutrition, right? Milk, and whole meat, and steak, and chicken. Some people say, well, I just feed my kid a candy bar, and lollipop, and potato chips, and water. That second kid is healthy in a sense of, they don't have any disease, they're proper body weight, they're not obese, and there's nothing that the CPS court can do about those people that were thinking, well, you can't just feed your kid potato chips and candy, they can't, it's very hard for them to touch those situations, right? When you have obesity, or you have underweight, you know, that's a different topic. So coming back to the animal topic, what we want to make sure we're not doing is using words that adequate, I think to everybody in this room, probably means about the same thing, but adequate for somebody else could be completely different. So what is your experience with the courts, and having, you know, when you're writing something up that says it's just not adequate to care of this animal, how is that dealt with if someone just wants to pull ahead the system?
Right, and it's very similar to what you're describing on the CPS end of things. So that's where, as I pointed out, we are evaluating basic needs, are those provided for, and then the condition of the animal. If those basic needs are met, in whichever way they are, and the animal is free of disease and in good body condition, there's not a lot you can do. But you also have to realize too, that a lot of our livestock species can subsist on a lot of different things. So like, they'll feed old potatoes to dairy cows, and they'll feed candy to dairy cows because they can get it cheap, and because they balance the nutrition to match with their production and what they want to have. So you could feed a variety of different things to different species, and still provide adequate food to maintain free of disease and body condition. And again, from different perspectives, adequate can be different things, especially when you're looking at pets and production animals. So people that have that species for a pet may view adequate much differently than somebody that has that animal for production. And unfortunately, I really don't have a lot of, these aren't the specific amounts, other than things like NRC. So if you did have someone feeding potatoes only, well, you could say, well, that doesn't meet the NRC requirements for that species. That was the, I mentioned it further back, where they provide kind of what those basic nutrients are for that species. But if you were balancing potatoes with other things to meet the NRC requirements, then that's adequate.
So in your profession then, is just using the terminology best practices, does that work?
Yeah.
Right?
That would be fine. And that's where GAMS can be beneficial, but you'll even notice in GAMS, there's not a lot of specifics, and that's because things can vary a lot based on species and production systems.
Ultimately, the test for whether it is adequate or not is if the animal is in a healthy condition.
Correct.
So then, if we are putting a language that says, you know, you have to make sure there's adequate food, water, and shelter in order to keep the animal in a healthy condition, would give us enough base to determine if it's adequate or not? Because that's the ultimate goal, animal welfare, to keep them in a healthy condition.
And one last question for me right now, is for shelter, so I've seen people that have cows or sheep, it doesn't make a difference, but they're in pasture, in the center of the pasture, there's no building, there's no brick and mortar, there's no trees, there's no mound of dirt, they're in the middle, but they time-share, they're in a huddle, and they time-share who's on the outside.
Right, yeah.
Right, now, does anybody get away with that? Or is it, have you seen that being argued into?
Yeah, so I have. There were some horses out in pasture that didn't have a structure, didn't have a windbreak or anything, but there was a hill, and so that they claimed that that hill was sufficient windbreak for the horses, because they would go down the hill. But if you evaluate the body conditions for the horses, the combination of that hill and what they're being fed, and what they're being given for water was not adequate. So you kind of have to look at it at a larger perspective. You have sheep out on the range, are wet, that have no shelter for miles and miles, but the environment that they're in is cold, but less wet, so, and they have constant forage there versus a couple acres where they have to be provided with hay on a routine basis, that's going to change the adequacy of different types of shelter. We have a much more wet environment than somebody else might, so you have to keep that in mind when they're saying, well, these sheep are this way. Yeah, but that's on the other side of the country, with a different environment and different situation. You have to evaluate the animals in that particular situation, as to whether it's adequate again, kind of based on the health of the animal.
Okay, one more question, sorry.
Yeah.
Shelter, we all know food, water, shelter, but if you have, if you have this table, and you say it's to shelter, or a lean to, you have a lean to the size of this table, that you can get three animals in it, but you have 50 animals.
That's not adequate for the number of animals.
So it, because I asked that, because all this stuff that we've gone through for all these years, I've never seen anything, even from GAMS, that says adequate for all at one time.
Yeah, and then again, it kind of comes back down to evaluating, so when you have that situation, and your body condition for those animals, if you have 10% of them that are underweight, you are not adequately providing for those individuals, they're probably at the bottom of the totem pole, so they don't get that shelter. You also have, even with sufficient shelter, I think I had a slide up there that showed like that little hoop barn, that's a barn that we use for our sheep, and all of them can fit in there, but three will decide they want to be in there, and the rest just lay up and we just snow that piles on top of them. But we, that's what those animals choose to do, it doesn't mean that there's not adequate shelter, they just want to lay up in snow apparently, because they're more comfortable there. But as long as they're maintaining an adequate body condition, based on the food they're provided, and such and such, then that's again, considered adequate, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Bane, appreciate your time. Mr. Buzzard, your own thing?
Thank you. My tech app.
We have a tech. See all that stuff that's open on the bottom of her screen?
You can see more, yes.
No, see all the, did you see all the buttons on the right hand side?
Okay, thank you. This was, like, a short notice, I hope this may be a little underwhelming for you, but I'm just going to give a quick introduction about the meat program, and then we're going to talk a bit about manure management, and by disposal, we have questions that deal specifically with that. And then I'll potentially be able to show some actual questions that deal with those things, or else you can ask me, or we can refer to those actual questions. First of all, are you all familiar with the meat program? Maybe, no? Okay, I've worked with a lot of producers here in Webster, so I was kind of excited to talk to you. Again, to talk about bio, my background is mostly, well, I grew up on a farm, I kind of switched gears to conservation biology, working around the world, organized a zoo, kind of came back to the farm world with our own farm, and also this, my current job with the meat program. And again, I work at Washington County Conservation District, or WCCD. There you probably know us best from the plant sales, we also have education events, technical assistance like myself, who work with meat, also we help farmers with the farm bill program, that kind of thing. Again, just meat program, it is, it's really, it's really a nice, interesting program. It's innovative, it's proactive, voluntary, confidential, which farmers love. It's great, it helps farmers of all sites, that are farms that are, you know, 500 dairy cow operations, down to 10 ducks. As long, as long as those farmers, you know, produce something, it could be just a roadside stand, we can work with them through meat. Help them minimize and reduce pollution risks, and get them, give them those nice meat signs, get them recognized for that, help their neighbor relations. It started back in 98, it was really this kind of pressure program, that realized that we're here in the Great Lakes water basin, so we need to, of course, protect the Great Lakes, it's a beautiful watershed. So as a project, it started with a number of groups, the pork producers, dairy council, corn, soy growers associations, MBNR, a lot of state government agencies, and also, as Dr. Bane said, it's in compliance with the GAMS, generally accepted agriculture practices, and also right to farm. So our questions are kind of in line exactly with those, so a farmer can get verified in meat, you know they're in line with right to farm, and or GAMS. And just briefly, it's a what's called a four-system, three-phase program. First phase is education, second phase is an on-farmers success system, which I'll go on the farm, and take out, you know, a book of, or just kind of off the top of my head, a ton of questions, and go through the farm, how they're storing things, what their operation is, how they're dealing with manure, for example, how they're dealing with, they dispose of dead livestock, it's just soil, how the soil looks for phosphorus levels, etc. And then I'll go through the questions, get them all, everything is up to speed, and then verifier comes through, it's that phase three, and she goes, basically, redo what I did basically, and make sure the farm is verified, and then get the sign, get it signed off. And just back up to the phase one, the education, that could be either, they can get that, a farmer can get that phase one by either going to a field day, a special meat field day here in Washington County, or other counties nearby, or else they're watching some videos on the meat website, and get that phase one taken care of. And the systems we look at, we look at what's called the farmer's stead, which I'll kind of go over to a little bit what that involves next slide. Cropping livestock. Cropping, livestock, or a farm well and habitat system, it was kind of the newest, the newest system, farm well and habitat. You know, so a farm, farmers, we start, we start to recognize farmers have a nice woodlot on their place, their wetlands, and they're taken care of. We thought that we, or meat, kind of thought farmers should be recognized for the conservation value of that, that system, that habitat. And just looking at what we do, and this is a kind of idealized farm, but like, so for example, for the farmer's system, we'll go, we'll test the farm as well, make sure there's no E. coli, no nitrates, we'll look at the well, look at the fertilizer, test that storage in the farm there, make sure it's far enough away from the well, make sure the septic system is, is running, has been checked fairly recently, make sure the fuel tank's in order and is far enough away from the well. And that's the main, the main parts of the farmer's shed. For cropping, for cropping, the most important part for me is to get them, get farmers sort of, or their fields up to speed for soil testing, phosphorus especially. If the phosphorus is above 150 per million, or 300 pounds per acre phosphorus, then really by law, they can no longer apply manure or phosphorus fertilizer onto their soil. Just really, a lot of farmers are really, they're pretty savvy, they're getting, you know, on board the importance of soil testing, so a lot of farmers do test soils regularly, but some don't. It's good to get, to let farmers know about the importance of soil testing, and we provide that with meat as part of our verification process. And so we provide soil tests and see, and then we see how much they're applying, be it manure or phosphor, fertilizer, how much they're applying, and make sure that the crops they have, they're growing, are taking off, are taking out enough nutrients to account for fertilizer they're putting on. So potentially, we can show farmers that, okay, you've got sky-high phosphorus levels, so you can, and we just basically eliminate and save some money and don't apply any phosphorus fertilizer. So it can get, be a really good thing. And for livestock, we look at, the biggest thing is manure storage. How far is that manure storage from the well? How far is it from any open water? Is it, you know, in the case of liquid manure, is it, does it account for a huge rain event? Is there enough, you know, empty space, pre-board, we call it, to account for that? If you're composting, manure is it far enough away from property lines, far enough away from neighbor houses? Are you kind of odor, are you, you know, putting on the straw or the, or is it, is it being covered by tarp? And there's no, there's a huge runoff in the storage? Just those are basically the, and really good, you know, how is the silage being stored? Is the silage, is there a leachator runoff from the silage storage? Is the feedlot far enough away from the well? Again, far enough away from neighbors? And actually, for the big part of livestock, we do, we do what's called a livestock sighting assessment with right to farm. And if a structure, a feedlot or a manure storage structure, or a, you know, a shed or livestock structure, has been built in the past, you know, since like 2020, I think, then it's got to be, you know, far enough away from neighbors, non-farm neighbors, and make sure that the land has been zoned as our culture use. So I'll have examples of that sighting, which I might get to a bit later. Here's some examples of, again, when I'm looking around the farm, I look at this, the top right, fuel storage, are those new, are they double-walled? Are they, you know, off the ground? Are, make sure there's no underground tanks being used above ground, which is a big problem we run into sometimes. And importantly, it's on an impermeable surface, like concrete there, even where they load the fuel, that's also impermeable, so that's, those are in pretty good shape. Down on the left, make sure there's no erosion, take care of erosion with a rock or a brap. Again, with the fencing there, we're going to keep livestock out of the, out of the open water, which is happening there. A nice life, new livestock manure storage in the bottom right, which looks like in pretty good order. Again, you want to make sure it's, it's a concrete floor or impermeable, impermeable You've got nice, the rain, rain off the lid, that's a, that's very, that's very, very nice structure there. Okay. And then, like I said, third step is verification, and that's when I sit down with the producer and the meat verifier, who covers really all the stuff, because Michigan, she'll come by and double-check my work, our work with the farmer, and get them, they're signed with the meat verifier. Okay, so what are the benefits of meat? Like I said, it's confidential, which farmers love, it's voluntary, no vehicles are shared, which farmers also like. They go through a phase, I work with farms that get verified in, you know, weeks or a month or so. Other farmers take years. And some farmers are less concerned than others about, you know, if it happens, and maybe they're waiting to get their underground tank fixed, or some little thing is keeping up and getting verified, but they just are, are not as concerned about it as others. And again, if the farm does get meat verified, if they, if they're hauling manure and there's a spill, and they do their best to contain it, and they call the proper number, give them the proper number for manure spills, as long as, as long as they do that, it won't be held liable for any, if manure gets into the body water, there's dead fish or something. They won't be held liable for that as long as they are, as long as they did their best to contain it and also call the pollution, pollution hotline, which we provide that. And again, by getting verified, they know they're in compliance with right to farm, they know their phosphorus levels, if they are above 150 or 3 million, they're not applying any manure to those areas. And livestock sighting, like I said, if they have new structures, you know, the structure of farm away from non-farm neighbors. Also, meat verification gives you, gives farmers discounts, farm year membership, it gives a discount, membership with a corn grower association or soybean grower association, and gives them a reduction on their farm year insurance, which a lot of folks love. And if it's applicable, it gives them some credits for REP, which is restricted, restricted use of pesticide credits, which a lot of farmers do like this, it prevents them from needing to take the test every year, get those, get those REP credits for their pesticide Additional benefits, show that you're a good steward, good marketing, our farmer is meat verified, we have a little farmer's stand, and folks would like to see, I think that we're doing our part. Like I said, we will provide, the well, we'll test the well, we've tested it in three years for E. coli and nitrates, which farmers appreciate. Also, soil sampling, which, you know, farmers are doing, we help them get, help them do that, buy that, which they appreciate. Make sure they have a spill kit for fertilizer and pesticide. And yeah, get them a great sign, and let farmers know they're doing their part. And again, I have some, should we, is there, I have some kind of examples of, like, actual questions.
The PDS, or should?
Yeah. Are there any questions now? We can...
I have some. Anybody else have some?
Yeah.
Why don't we open up questions for the board members, and then we can come back here to the hot answer. Board members, any questions?
In our community, if you have more than an acre, you can have chickens, rabbits, small animals. If you have more than two acres, you can have some large animals. And so if I have on my property these animals, and I am not going to sell them, I'm raising them for my own use, am I a farmer to you? Can I work with you? I'm not a producer for someone else.
Right. Unfortunately, no, I mean, if, if you ask me nicely, I might come and, you know, help you, give you some pointers, but to get meat verified, we kind of, that's the distinction is to be selling products.
Selling products.
Yeah, and it could be, I mean, I, I work with, like I said, I said, folks that had like 10 ducks, and they sold some of the eggs, you know, it can be pretty limited, the amount of, amount of, sort of, you know, commodity sold, but that is sort of the line, I'm told, is it has to be out, be out of the...
Okay, then I'll modify it. If I sell some eggs, but I'm still this small little farm, can, can you work with me on manure management and these different things?
Yeah.
And can I get verified too?
Sure.
Okay. Because we have people, I think, maybe people on, in more residential areas are now able to have farm animals, so they might be some of the people looking for guidance.
Yeah, sure, I mean, I, I, I've got a ton of farmers on my, on my plate now, but that is, as long as they are, even, you know, selling a few eggs out of a roadside stand or something, yeah, that's, that's, they're able to approach us for, and at least, at least in full of verification assessment is maybe, you know, a visit, to walk around and see how they're, how they're getting the manure, and that kind of thing is pretty possible.
Thank you. I have one other question about this environmental, wetlands, forest, wetlands and habitat system. Is there some kind of guidance about, you know, what you can do so that it doesn't impact the environment that's online, or?
Well, we can, I can give you, I can, I can definitely provide, you know, the questions to go through with that forest, wetland, habitat, sort of assessment. That's mainly, I mean, sometimes it's not even farmers, it's property owners who own like, you know, 10 acres, they're, they're limited, above 10 acres, you need to get a certified forester to do a forest natural plan. Below, I guess, 10 to, you know, 12, 15 or so, then I can do it myself, and I work with the producer and ask basically what their goals are, the current conditions, and how, what they can do to meet those goals. Remember here, like up north, the meat, meat folks deal a lot with forest, like the loggers who are logging in the forest, but here is not much logging, it's mostly invasive control, and work with farmers to show, you know, how many bases, you know, like buckhorn, autumn olive, all these, you know, invasives that are everywhere, oriole bittersweet. Basically, for me, for, work with the producer, it involves a lot, you know, walking, walking with them to see, you know, how bad are these invasives, you know, I can do a list of contractors to help them, they can be bringing controlling bases, and working together with a land management plan, which, which, again, it's kind of, a lot of times, go back to the Washington County map, you know, pre, the 40s, 50s, how their land looked back then, how it looks now, and how they can maybe, how they can prove, verify. It comes down mostly to your invasives, that's the biggest problem in wetlands and forests.
Thank you.
In one of your cycles, as you said, you check for how far the manure piles are from wells, how far the composting areas are from property owners. Do you have like minimum guide, minimum requirements, like this is the minimum it means to be away from a well?
We do. If it's a private well, it's centered by feet net these, or on this...
Yeah, just too small?
Yeah, but I, I... Okay, here, this is, this is the huge book I take through when I, would take when I go to the farm, or I just kind of, I go to the farm, then come back and answer the questions later. Here we go. It goes through questions about, yeah, how petroleum products are stored, waste management, pesticide storage, relative storage.
Is this available for us, or can you send that to Sri?
I have that.
Yeah.
So I can put...
As we look at the organs, that would be a good document to have in our packet.
And yeah, there is, there's the whole section on order management, there's a whole section on body disposal, which follows the Michigan, the BODA Act, the Body, Body, Busted Animals Act. And again, the, in that case, dead body burial has got to be 200 feet from well, not within, not within, not next to forest estates.
Is, is there a size requirement for when we're saying 200 feet from the well? What if, what if you've got to put down like six chickens to their dispositions? I mean, do they have to be 250 feet from the well, or are we talking a cow or a horse?
It doesn't, it's, I consider either one, I mean, yeah. A horse is equal to, I mean, in our, in our book, it's, yeah, horses are considered the same as, yeah, chickens and dogs.
And it generally has to be burial?
Generally, it can be also composted, but then composted, we require records showing that, you know, it goes through preheat cycles, you know, three cycles over above 100 degrees or something. Which again, if we follow directly the BODA, Busted Animals Act...
This could be a vet question too, how to dispose.
We, also, we say, some folks, some folks say, well, we just, you know, put it in trash, like chickens or that kind of thing.
I just remember years ago in the county, we had an issue that they had taken the animals and just drug them out back of the property and left them. And it wasn't, the issue wasn't just, there was one, they had a bunch at this time, this is probably 20 or 30 years ago, there was a site that they had done, and it was, it was not good. And I worked for the drain commissioners at that time, so it's, yeah, you're looking at water supply and things like that. We also dealt with a lot of stuff of pastures, sometimes the farmers would just take the fence and put it on the other side of the creeks, and so, you know, the cows or the livestock could get down there, but then again, it's, it's an erosion issue, it's, it's a pollution issue because of the manure. There were, we had a lot of issues with that. But, you know, I'm just curious about this whole...
So at least from a veterinary perspective, it somewhat matters of how the animal died too. So for example, if I as a veterinarian come out and euthanize with a barbiturate, or what community has done a lot, especially on the equine side, it's my responsibility as a veterinarian to ensure that animal's going to be disposed appropriately, so it has to either be buried or it has to be taken to a disposal, by a disposal company. Out by us, there's a company that goes around several of the counties called Rest in Peace, and they remove the body and then they dispose of it appropriately. There's also services that will come out and cremate a horse and that sort of thing, just depends on what the owner or producer wants to spend. If that animal's going to be composted, can't use a barbiturate because of the risk of other animals getting at it, that animal would be toxic if consumed. So if that's the case, then I would euthanize that animal in a different way, either, you know, if they're using caperful or gunshot, I could use other medications that are not toxic to other animals getting at them. There's that issue with that, like eagles eating dead animals that were euthanized with barbiturates and that sort of thing. So there's a little bit of, some of that goes back to the veterinarian, if there's a veterinarian involved, but if the producer euthanized or the animal just died in a site, there's different, different things as far as that goes too.
My turn for questions?
Thank you.
I've got one. So if I've got a fireman that's been certified for meat markets, and next day during the certification was another fire, right? Then that fire sells to, there's a subdivision that's in houses that are all non-farm residences. And my manure pile at the time was close to that farm, but my requirement system wasn't close to a residence, but now it becomes close to a residence that came in after receiving certification. You make me move my manure pile somewhere else, or my grandfather did, and it's the residents that moved in, made it too close to me, have already had my... You make me move my manure pile somewhere else, or my grandfather did, and it's the residents that moved in, made it too close to me, have I already had my manure pile or manure pit established?
That's a good question. I would, I would actually ask the verified and ask the right to farm folks, that's, I think, I think maybe grandfather them probably. I would, I would have to go to write the farm, and ask them for sure.
Oh, that's very sound work.
Yeah, but that's, I know, that's, that's happening a lot, you know, with, with, with farms and development and, and, that's why, the, I.
You guys come out like every three years or something, right, to, to continue verification?
Yeah, sorry.
That was going to be a question of mine too.
Yeah.
Keep coming out.
Yeah, every five years, that's why, that's why we're getting, we're getting ready to have, and started, you know, first verification back in 2003. So there's a big, big, big backlog of folks re- re- verifying new farms, we're just getting really a bit overwhelmed with, between the re-verification and verification, it's getting difficult. But, yeah, and, sorry, just to get back to Suri, like here's an example, like liquid manure storage, this is simply liquid manure storage, liquid manure storage. It's got to be 150 feet or greater for private wells, and then it's same for dry manure. So I won't, you know, bore you with this, but with this, this document, if you look through it, a lot of, a lot of, you know, sections won't apply. But you probably focus on the manure storage sections and the, the animal sections, and the order management sections too.
Do you think I should? Well, I'm asking on her behalf.
Okay.
Apparently she says she's not allowed to ask, even though she's our secretary. How much does it cost for you to come out and do an assessment?
Nothing, it's free.
It's free?
Free.
Well, there you go.
It costs eight, right, well, we, it did cost the district some, I guess, but, no, it's, it's free.
Okay, can I ask my question before you do? The, just it's free, but is it, do you schedule stuff via the website, telephone call, any of that? How are you contacted?
Um, I've got my, my phone, or my email is on.
Okay.
Yeah.
And are you out of, are you on Jackson Road, or are you over by the state, or by the?
We used to be, no, we were at Z.
You're on Z.
Same, same, over by the water commissioner, or next door to the water commissioner, second floor.
Are you in the?
Seven oh five.
The road commission?
Second floor.
Your next door. We're between the road and, and South Township, I think, right now.
Yeah, you're in the old, the county.
Yeah.
Good. Mine is a two-part question. We have done a lot of work, and Kay, as you heard earlier, is our representative, because you're on Watershed Council, does a lot of work with them. Given what you are doing here, do you integrate any of your findings with theirs because, and this is the part B. We have spent a lot of time here looking at runoffs in permeable surfaces and wetlands, and you mentioned earlier the ratio of wetlands versus trees on farms and streams. And as you know, Washington counties are pleat with streams that feed into the Huron River, so they're all like, they're mixed. Bottom line question is, how do you integrate if you do? And secondly, if you do, how do you, is it in this document your recommendations for how to manage that, or work with that?
Ask the first question, integrate with, with who, with, with?
With Huron, with Huron Valley Watershed Council.
Oh, um.
Huron River. Whatever it is. We've got too many acronyms around here.
Oh, yeah. You're the department acronym, I know. Actually, I, I simply don't, we have a competition specialist, kind of the, my manager Nick Michinski. He works a lot with, with River Rouge, I mean, Washington, as you know, it's, it's got waters to go, areas to go to, Lake Michigan, here it goes to, it's got, you know, so many watersheds here. We work with, yeah, Huron, River Rouge, River Aisen.
So if you took an assessment somewhere around here, you would talk to them and go by the way, have you talked to them, or been over here? Or how do you, what integration, if any, is there? You, you could be literally telling somebody something different than a person from the Huron River Watershed Council, unless you're talking to each other.
Yeah, I, I don't, I guess, unless I, I mean, cause it is, if I find something like, you know, a pollution risk that's really egregious, I really can't approach generally because it is confidential. But I guess, I guess, I guess the answer is we don't collaborate directly. I mean, I, I know those folks, we, I mean, I, I work with them, I guess, to an extent. But there's no, yeah, there's no direct collaboration with, with our questions.
So no offense, you can make recommendations, and when they come out looking at the situation, they could go, bad boy. Cause you might have a runoff issue that conflicts with what their recommendation is.
Could potentially have.
Okay.
I have a follow-up on that. What about our zoning ordinances? So for example, the Huron River, we're in a special section of the Huron River, a state designated natural river. And Arms Creek is in there, and there's a lot of farms on Arms Creek, and there's a required 50-foot vegetative buffer. And there's restrictions on what you can do in that 50 feet. If a farmer came to you to talk about their plan, would you be aware of that unless they told you?
Um, no, but that, we do, we stress with farmers about the importance of buffers, we, as part of our reporting, we say, how many, how many linear feet of water has, has livestock excluded, or has, you know, 50-foot buffers? So we do, we do that, we do, you know, like, we show as farmers all those setbacks, and we film climate manure within 30 feet of, of water, that kind of thing. So we, yeah, we do address that, I guess.
So these things are, sometimes these things are in our zoning ordinance for our community. So you would rely on them to look at that, to see if it, I don't know if it conflicts with what you recommend or what.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's a good point, because you're doing something quietly, unless you look at our ordinance. We don't care, but I think Kay's got a good point. If you're looking at something along one of our tributaries, looking at our ordinance and setbacks to make sure that yours aren't less than we already mandated. You get the farmer in trouble, not of his own making, he's going, well, I went to these guys.
Right, I really wouldn't pass the assembly notes, send me those, send me those.
I mean, our ordinances are online, but this particular one, the state is a state, what I asked the right to farm guy who was here to send a question. And he was also not aware that there were state designated waterways that had special requirements. But I could send you with that program, and we have our zoning ordinances on, we could highlight those ones for you.
Yeah, I think.
Just to see if yours are stricter or not.
Yeah, I'm curious too. We work a lot, I've actually realized, Huron, we were like, in southern part of Washington, it's in the WLP, the West Lake Area Basin, which is really a focus area for us, for. It's, it's the impact of, again, phosphorus levels being too high, runoff going into the lake area, and causing algal blooms, like blade will have to shut underwater. Because of those algal blooms, so I have to take a big concern first.
Okay, I'll collect some information to follow up with you.
Excellent, and plus Arms Creek is, tends to be a trout stream also, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I work with producer, really gorgeous, actually Arms Creek, and he's got beavers and obvious potential, yeah. Yes.
Anything else? Just a quick question, does, and I think it's soy conservation district, doesn't it? Or handle the program, do you guys still do crop strips and stuff like that for farms, for vegeta- vegetated strips on, in waterway, you know, adjacent to waterways? And in drainage areas and things like that? I know that the federal government at one time, and I believe that's where the funding came from, compensated farmers for not tilling that area and letting it, letting it grow and become a vegetative buffer. Do you guys still do that?
Right, we, we don't, we, we have FSA, the farm, like at New Jackson, InterCS office. But that's a big part of my, you know, I walk around a farm, if I see, you know, a potential one, I'll, I'll steer them to the FSA, or I'll, I'll kind of steer them in that direction. In special watersheds, the Stone Creek, again, Nick Michinski, the conservation specialist, he, he used to try to, convince farmers to put like easements on, along. Which they get paid, they get paid, you know, per acre even more than, than those, the CRP program. And it can be like a harvest, it could be a harvestable buffer, or it could be, or it is wild habitat. He works in certain, I guess, just certain, called puck watersheds. But, you know, you know, kind of why, if they want to do that, you know, that'd be with FSA, or at Jackson, I'll, I'll kind of help them get that process started. And I, I do love to see that, and that's a big part of our recording, we say, you know, we have, you know, so many acres in with cow crops, acres with no till, and so many linear feet of, of buffers like that.
Okay, thank you.
Really, straightforward.
Anybody else? Thank you, Paul.
Okay, I think Sarah was not so overprepared, I'll be over prepared next time.
That's great.
Thanks very much for coming.
My pleasure, thank you.
Very informative, very helpful, and I'm guessing we'll be at least referencing some of your material and maybe iterating with Suri as we move forward on our ordinance.
For sure, and again, I'll send you, I'll send you also the habitat, sort of assessment questions to get an idea what, what, and I warn you, they're, they're, again, most of the questions won't apply, but they, they're law documents. But, yeah, any questions for that, for that, about that, please, reach out.
You should come to more of our meetings, we have lots of questions.
We're not yet.
Yeah, if you have, if you have a farmer, if they can, they want to get me verified, just, just, my email is on, I think, probably.
So, I got one more. I mean, when we talk about all this stuff, but you're talking about producing farms, what about horse farms? Ones that, I mean, they're, we're talking about riding stables and stuff like that, and another situation that we had at one time where we were, we were tracking down E. coli and streams, high content of E. coli. And it turns out, it was a horse farm. It was, you know, they had very nice grass, and as we know, grass is nice for keeping the soil there, but it's not good for runoff, but it actually aids in runoff. But anyways, they, they were contributing a lot of, just from the horse manure and their grounds, the way that things were set up, it all drained toward the creeks. And does, who inspects those and looks at that kind of stuff?
Well, I've worked with several, several, several horse farms. And like, like I said, you know, I guess they, they, they board horses, I guess there's some kind of transaction going on, there's some kind of commercial.
Yeah, it's a commercial.
Aspect of it, yeah, I work with, with a number of horse farms.
Okay. So it's not always a product like milk or whatever, it could be.
Right, 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 right. And I actually, Washington, I'm always surprised, there are quite a few horse farms in Washington, yeah. Yeah.
Cool. Thanks, Joe. And again, thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
You have three more amendments, keep the next one like this. And we assume you both rather. Thanks, you guys, have a good evening.
Yes, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. We have no public hearing tonight, so the next thing on our agenda is draft discussion for section 19, 10, or 9, 10. Agricultural District, Suri has a rather, we had asked her last meeting to cover her part changes, and so we could review the course of the new document, which she has done.
I think your, the order in the packet is different than the order in the agenda. Yeah, the nine, 10, is on page 33 in the packet.
I'm very.
Oh, well.
I forgot to add the nine.
How about we do it in the agenda since that's what we approved. So, section. On page 33, thank you very much. Anyway, now we get to Suri to look at some tendencies for par versus our, a lot of coverage, and she has done that. Suri, do you want to add anything else to the changes made since the last time?
The changes were pretty straightforward, but just because they're a little bit more, we decided to, you know, look at a clean document. The first one was on, if you're looking at the draft, not the memo, but the draft.
Page 34, right?
Let's see, 100. That's not in the package.
It's in the package, you sent it later. Do you want one, Tom?
Yeah.
I think we all.
I thought I was looking at. Yeah, this was, this was after, and later. How do you not have that handled? Did you not have that handled? Thank you. Okay, sorry.
So the first change was in, I think that you guys wanted, the plant commissioner wanted to revise the language so that it, it matches section 13.0, the residential part of it. So that was the revision made. It's not exactly what you discussed, but that made more sense because it's more in alignment with 13.70. If you don't like the revision, we can change it too.
So what we said last time, there's temporary structures, residential dwellings, and temporary structures, non-residential use.
Right.
15.7?
When I was looking at it one more time, it felt like, when I say temporary structure, residential dwelling, it almost makes it feel like I can have temporary structure and it's dwelling on my vacant property. So to avoid that confusion, I was considering this suggestion.
What is this?
15.7, is it accessory structures or?
It's the temporary structure requirement.
Temporary structural requirement.
It's 170.
Yeah, 172. 172, okay. 15.172. 15.172.
So I just wanted to put the add that it's an accessory dwelling, but it's temporary.
Does, would this have a link to 13.170?
Yes.
Because when I clicked on this, I did not get the link.
It will have.
It would have had.
Right.
And then what is the next one? Does it click to the same part?
Yes.
Residential temporary structure?
It would click to the same part.
Because those words are, those exact words are in here. On page 65 of article 13, number four, it says non-residential temporary structure. So that's exactly on the, that section.
You think they are in there?
They are.
Oh, yes, I was thinking.
Non-residential temporary structure is exactly in there.
Yes.
Temporary accessory dwelling is not exactly in there, it says temporary dwelling, but.
But a lot of them specified that it's an accessory, you can have corporate dwelling on a vacant property.
Thank you for explaining.
Then the other change we talked about was just adding the clarification that what, that the miniflory area ratio for non-conforming lots, that it does not apply to lots within the site condominium. And the same thing, same provision to section 9.15, where we had reference to non-conforming lots of record, and indicating that this does not apply to lots within a site condominium. So this was, this was challenging. I thought trying to find a definition for site condominium in the land division should be easy, but it wasn't. It, that was a surprise, that was really a surprise. Most zoning ordinances don't define them. Some define them, but then that just matches with what they're trying to do with their specific. I looked at the land division act, I looked at the subdivision ordinance act. Maybe, then I started wondering, maybe that's why they don't kind of exactly define them in those ordinances. Because a condominium essentially sometimes have to do with type of ownership. It can be a site condominium, it can be a building condominium, it can be a space. It's just defining types of ownership. But I did, I did, I made an attempt to try to come up with a definition that would prob, you know. So, the book is?
I have a question, how was our, how was our site condominium? Definitions get done when the site condominiums were built, like five? There was no definition?
There's no definition, but there's a whole section that talks about how they're.
Okay, so nobody cared.
Right, because it's kind of like a, there are three ways you can divide a property. You can use the land division act, apply for a lot split. You can use the site condominium provision to do lot splits. But the site condominium, a lot, okay, not in that order, lot split, or you can do a planted subdivision, and then a site condo.
So a site condo requires a site plan?
Yes, a site condo requires a site plan because it's not regulated by the land division act. And a master deal. And then site condo allows you to have certain flexibilities that are not afforded with a planted subdivision, like you can open space preservation, you can have more lots than the land division act allows you, you can have smaller lots sometimes. So that flexibility is only for site condos. Planted subdivision and lot splits, they are tied to how many are allowed based on your acreage for land division act. And the process for doing lot splits is much easier than process to do a site condo. But then between site condo and planted subdivision, people prefer site condo because the legal process for planted subdivision is a lot complicated than the site condo. It's just pros and cons. Do you have more time, do you have more money, do you need more lots? Is that something?
Almost apparently they go with site condos, but there just isn't.
Right, they stop to, planted subdivisions are viable, because there's just too much fatalities into it, a lot of steps, a lot of verifications, multiple agencies.
It's cheaper to do.
It's cheaper to do site condos.
But at the June board meeting, wasn't there a person applying for a private road permit for land that he had divided up according to a planted subdivision?
No, he was doing a lot split.
He was doing lot splits?
Lot splits, he was doing a division.
So that's still common?
That is still common because that is administrative, it's very quicker process. You only need a surveyor to do your, unless there's a private road, then you need a private road permit. But that's still common. So the division, oh, yes, sorry, the division limits you to the number of splits you have. So the land division tells that if you are up to 40 acres, you get, don't go by my numbers, actually. It just, it tells you, you only have 10 splits, and then those splits renew after every, you know, a certain number of years. Like I have 40 acre property, I can only get 10 splits if I go through lot splits. But if I go through a site condo, I can get up to more, I can get up to 20, 25 splits. So that's why people choose site condos. But anyways, long story short, those are the three types of documents you have. So I kind of put them in a subcategory for the type of documents. Land document. And then made a reference to what act guides that type of document.
Any comments, questions?
I've got a question. As for the definition.
Give your microphone, please. Or for Josephine George.
As a definition page, how is that fitting in in the definitions? Is the types of land divisions a definition in itself? Or?
So the.
Site condominium, the definition is. Divide, division.
So the divide or division is an existing definition. It is in the alphabetical order under B. But then I was thinking those three should probably stay together so that all three different types are in one place. But that's a very good question, Julie, but I didn't think much, think much into it. I think we could probably call it land document types and then put it under L or. Because it doesn't go well with T, it's essentially type, you know, land document types. So it'd go under L.
And then lot would be its own definition?
Yes, lot is its own definition that's existing.
And then lot of records also. And that's what the four and the five confuse me.
Yes, oh, yes.
So the number four and five don't actually.
Oh, it's, in the one document, I think it just took, continued.
Can I have that?
Yes, it's one. And I also noticed lot of record is in two different places in the zoning ordinance, but it's exactly the same work age, so I'm just going to delete the redundant. Oh, and then I did modify lot of record by including that it's not just part of a planted subdivision, it can be part of a land division, but not part of a site condo.
So what do you want us to do tonight?
So I think you've already done the public hearing, so the, if this is good to go, the next step is to send it to the board. It would be a motion to recommend adoption to the township board.
With, with corrections made?
Correct.
35 of 35, there's an example motion.
Yeah. I looked at that, but you never know. Are we okay with that, with some? Oh, have you sent it to the lawyer yet, or do you think we need to? She's burning her paper. She's the one that needs the microphone, can't put George.
Judge doesn't get one, and he goes, oh, God.
This is a magic place to be, you just transported over there.
I wish that was on video.
Look, I'm sorry, in the, what did Martha?
But if we pass it by the lawyer yet, or do you think we need to in this case?
Oh, I personally don't think we need to.
I don't think we need to either.
He's already.
I have to.
Yes.
Then one of my guest members would like to make a motion, like the one on page 35 and 36, for the slight modification based on revisions we made tonight. Move to recommend township board the adoption of amendments section 9, 10B, 9, 10D, 9.15D, of article nine and section 2.0, article two, which township zoning ordinance has amended to address maximal floor area ratio standards of non-conforming lots and to reclassify temporary structures within the AG and all for the.
Second. Got the numbers right.
We owe a vote, Paul. If I have a vote or a con. Should, should 9, 10C be included in the motion since you're deleting? And you have to renumber them? So who would put 9, 10C in the motion? Yeah.
So we can just do section 9, 10. That covers A, B, C, D, all.
Or we could just add 9, 10C.
Either one, it's, yeah.
I'd like to amend my motion to include section 9, 10C changes.
Gotcha.
Paul?
Aye.
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 Aye? May is motion, thank you very much for. Okay, now I'm going to try to go back to my agenda. Three has another been voted on this.
So at the last meeting, the plan commission asked Suri to summarize what's different from existing. And then when I was trying to make notes, I realized, not much. I used a majority of the existing language as is. Sometimes slight modifications and then reorganized in the new ordinance. But the new language I added is in blue in the draft. And I gave a track change version that says where that language went in the new draft. And what language has been omitted from the existing language.
I'm going to make a comment on that because I normally don't comment on that, but in this case, I think your work has been outstanding in calling out the amount of changes of where they went.
Thank you. It was a good exercise.
So commissioners, might as well start on page in my packet, 25 or 36. Section 3.0 for certificate of zoning compliance. The applicability is not changed. We know where the, all the other changes came from. Do you have comments on B, C, D, or E on that page?
I have a comment on B1. So it says excavation alteration or filling of land if a washna county soil erosion permit is required. So I have a couple of comments. One, to me, that implies there's no other guidance unless a washna county permit is required. But I believe that we have a section 13.65 in our zoning ordinance. And that's one of the few things you took out from the current version, was the reference to 13.65. So, and so, and also the way it's worded, it implies that a county permit would only be required for filling of land? So because it says excavation alteration for filling of land if, if a washna county, to me, it looks like if a permit is required, it only goes with the filling of land. So I would say where a filling of, but my question is, why did we take out the reference to our own section, 13.65, where it does talk about grading? Because we do have guidance.
I'll just respond to that in just a bit, but we hold very fond of it. So I, the reason why the reference to the washna county soil permit, the thought I had, the intention I had when I put that together, is that there has to be some threshold. Like what if I'm just filling 50 square feet on my property? Do I need to come and apply for a permit? Or what if I'm just, you know, flattening some ground, that's alteration? So because there's no threshold, I, as I was referencing the washna county soil erosion threshold, I think their threshold is 200. Or 13.65 refers to what to do when you're grading, but it doesn't give us square minimum square footage for us to review a permit application.
It does talk about what to do, and previously we had that as referenced in the section.
Right, in this case, if you are doing filling, extraction, or anything related to a site plan, 13.65 would automatically apply. This is in reference to if you're doing something on your single family residential property. Do we have to make them go through the grading requirements? Because for compliance permit, I sometimes get hand drawn sketches.
Okay, plus, you know, this is, permits required are, 13.65 is not a permit per se, it's just guidance. So she's put this under permits.
As when a permit is required.
Do we still have another section where we talk about, well, you could have a site plan? We do, we do, it's an S.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, then what about the, the way it's worded?
That ultimately can be changed, yeah. We could probably say activities such as excavation, excavation, or filling of land when the area of, Martha, don't start that, I'm still thinking in my head.
You could reverse it. Just say when a washna county soil erosion permit is required.
But I want to make sure that it applies to all three, not just filling of land.
Right. Oh, you're just going to put those three. Yeah, I'll put it in the end. Say when a washna county soil erosion permit is required for either, and then you could say excavation, alteration, or.
Yeah, that works. Okay, that works. All I'm trying to do is to have a threshold, spare footage.
You good with that, Dan?
It's similar to like, you know, we have no permit if it's less than 200 to a like a county building permit. It's similar to like, you know, we have no permit if it's less than two-hundred to align with county building permits.
I have a, go ahead.
So I have another question, explanation, D-four. It says, you want to be?
Go ahead.
Okay, great.
And C, I think I know why it says what it says, but I just want to be clear. On C-one, does not alter the external footprint or height, but in other areas, we have a height restriction. So does this obviate that? Or how does it?
All I'm saying is.
As we talked about that before, accessory uses of structures, there's a higher requirement, is this negate that? Or should we reference that here?
No, all I'm saying is if the construction is within the existing footprint or the existing.
So it's going no higher, it's going no lower?
Yes.
Okay.
If it doesn't express what I'm trying to say, I'm open for suggestions.
But then, I can, just wanted to be clear. Thank you. Provide.
I think if we want, we can say does not alter the existing buildings.
I think it's.
It's fine, okay.
Okay.
D-four. So you, in F, Article sixteen is referenced, and we have a section on the natural rivers. So my question is just, what kind of activities would you expect that they need to get a permit from the, the natural resources rather than following our zoning ordinance?
I'm trying to follow the question, can you, sorry, can you repeat the question?
So D-four, you say other agency permits. And you list the Michigan Department of Natural Resources permits for designated natural rivers areas. And part of the reason we put it in our zoning ordinance is so that for most activities, people would not need to go to the DNR. They could easily follow our ordinance and, and you could approve it.
Right.
Based on the ordinance. So, so I, I'm just curious of what activities you think would be outside our ordinance that they want to do and have to get a permit? Or is this just, just in case?
Like a boat dock, or if they're doing a sea wall.
Yeah, it seems they would have to go.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one on the next sentence. And I would just add a couple of words. Says no construction or excavation shall commence until all articles have been obtained. From whom?
All the comments from that they need to get, all happened.
That is my, so B, C, and D. Not, it's under D. But you mean all the permits for all those sections? I, I could have read it if I wanted to be an idiot. As it only applies to permits under section D.
Yes. Section D, because we talk about you can't do anything later, start of construction.
Can you start before you have a preliminary certificate of compliance?
No.
But here it says if I have the county permits, I can start.
Right.
That's what, I think that's what Tom's saying.
Yeah, that's part of the system. I, I, you know, you've heard me saying before, coming into first coming in here, and I don't have two thousand lawyers in my town. Can I read through this list and go, oh yeah, I did it.
I think we can delete that line. And then if we go to page twenty-nine, look at item T, start of construction. Where it says not going or moving construction may commence without a preliminary certificate of zoning compliance or written authorization from the zoning administrator. I think that should cover it.
Okay, thank you.
Because I wouldn't issue one unless all permits.
And then that, right, that's gonna be scrubbed, yes, it has.
Yeah.
You're using one step?
T.
T.
One page, whatever, many pages later. Page twenty-nine, thirty-five.
So you're putting in T, or no, you're just saying?
Queried in sentence.
Yeah.
And T will be.
I mean, there are some permits that they will have, they can apply while constructions going on, but that's a very rare occurrence. I would put that in a condition, in a compliance permit, that, you know.
Okay. Are we okay with those sections on page twenty-five then? Anybody else? Moving on to the chart on page twenty-six.
It's great. I like the chart.
Is it easy to understand?
I think it is.
I have a question that the bio, it is wrote, if township issues a temporary final certificate, will the county issue an activity certificate?
They would issue a temporary certificate.
They would issue a temporary. Okay. Should we put, say that there, or?
That I would probably confuse them.
Okay.
There are some spelling issues in the last box.
That's a good.
Actually, also in the preliminary box, certificate.
Pre, preliminary?
I guess for the shot, get it that's fine.
So that, she was just saying that. So that's the two places. Also, I have a little minor question, it happens here. The, in the little column on the left, I, I think the section should be the capital S. And it shows up later in a couple of places. I like, I like the chart. Is that, will that be on your wall?
Martha, yes.
Read this first.
I was going back and forth whether I should include that in the zoning ordinance, or if I should just have it separate as a flyer. But then I thought, ordinance probably makes sense if somebody's looking at the ordinance, it's right there.
So it helped me a lot, so I've never applied for any of these things, and I'm reading it, and if there's just text, and it's just blah, blah, blah.
Right.
That's hard. I like this a lot.
All we're doing is just blah, blah. You heard it before.
We need pictures and blah, blah, blah.
Well, thank you for the chart, that's very useful. On page twenty-seven. Anybody have anything in the application form, number one? Number two, the new blue verbiage. Okay, this is yes, this is no.
No.
No. Thank you. Well, when everybody's looking, I can't tell. I have a comment in number three, registry survey.
Yeah.
I think the end of the first line sentence is not a sentence.
I think if you add the word provide, to provide proof of ownership.
Yeah.
Which I think it says somewhere else, but just here, the provide down there.
That's right.
Yes.
It's where I think provide, right? Provide. Anybody else have anything in number three? Number four, plots, and there's some new verbiage in D and E. I didn't find anything that doesn't, I didn't see it.
I have a general question, something in this section. So, um, most of these people will be individual, building individual houses, and there's a bunch of stuff in general requirements. Articles thirteen that apply to them, I think, so how will they know that? Can you give an example? I think there's landscaping, there's, I guess that's just a place of site plan maybe? Oh, improvements, so.
Those usually come up when they apply, they, they, you know, when they call me and say, hey, I'm trying to do this, what do I do? I give them a list of applicable recommendations, or if they already applied, then I would send them a letter saying, hey, these things are missing, I need you to provide this information.
So you would tell them, which are the, a couple of things, because it's different for everybody, or?
It can be different for everybody, because.
Nothing that's standard, or?
Right, just like we have, you know, permitted uses and special uses, some come with a link to go to for requirement, some don't. So it, it changes for each person.
So it doesn't make sense to reference?
Right, then if they get used to reference, and they might think it's not reference, or don't have any, anything else to follow.
Okay, K, makes sense.
Yes.
Anybody else have anything in section four? Section five? For number five, rather? I, I just have a question, it's not, it's not anything that's in here, but just for my brain to understand.
I think I might be blue, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I think I added that because I took a lot of hand draw. I once got a complete application, they should just put it across, this is where the pool is going.
And I get that, I understand that for administrative work, too. For my application, if I'm a small lot owner, how much would a licensed professional charge to create that plan?
Um, I'm not.
Roughly.
I don't know, I can't have, I don't have an estimate, but I can say one thing. From a compliance perspective, our compliance permit fees are fifty dollars. And all I would need is them providing a survey or a scale drawing to indicate where the structure's gonna be. So the reason why they would have to get a licensed architect or somebody to do a PDF plans or floor plans is because county requires them to do their structural review for buildings. So they're gonna, they have to generate them anyways for company, and you get a PDF copy. So we are not the one that's causing the cost. When I'm referencing to a line require a plan to be prepared by a licensed professional, I'm not talking about the floor plans or the elevations, I'm talking about a survey. That would probably, I would say, depending on the size of the property, fifteen hundred to thousand five hundred.
Would it be valuable then to say, to put in parentheses, for example?
A survey.
A survey.
I've got that.
And it just says plan.
Okay, yeah, required a survey, a site plan, I meant plot plan.
Can you say again what was?
Initially required plans may require a plot plan to be prepared by a licensed professional.
Is that the same as a survey?
No, but a plot plan is item four, which will have all that information. So it doesn't have to be prepared, it can be prepared by an architect too, or. I want, I was specifically keeping, keeping it general so that I can work with individual applicants depending on the needs.
Okay, I just.
No, that's a good point, a plot plan. I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not referencing to building plans or floor plans, a plot plan. County is the more needy one, perhaps.
It's still not really clear to me why I said that would be needed. I mean, when you said if the county requires something, but that's not what I read here.
So the county requires the building floor plans and the elevations, that mean that they are by a licensed architect or a licensed professional. What I'm asking for is a plot plan that shows the property line and the building location. And that would make more sense when, if, if I have a property of, you know, somebody, the applicant is proposing a house on a twenty-acre property, and the house is set back by seventy feet from the side lot line. Even if the house is not exactly placed there, they have room for error. But if I'm, if I have an applicant who's coming in and applying for a house on a point two acre property, a survey would help. And in, in those cases especially, if they have to require a CVA or something additional, then it would even more, make more sense to get it drawn by a, so leaving that optional. But eighty percent of the applications I get, people prepare those using Wasna County GIS maps. Or they draw on a plot plan or a map bead or something.
Number six then. Did you generate a file or not? We did, the plot plan. May require a plot plan to be prepared. Number six, anything in number six? Seeing none, number seven. Seeing no nodding, that's right, that's right, on page twenty-eight. It's a middle process. I'm a little unclear on G.
I think, sorry, you're right, I think the, prepared by the township, that's just misleading.
Okay.
So is it the applicant preparing it?
Yeah, yeah, what I meant was the form, yeah, I remember this. An application form along with the application fee, amendments due, and all of the materials shall be.
What?
Other amendments. Supporting materials.
So what, so the application form is which form?
It's just the compliance permit application form, the.
Can we say that then?
Sure, a permit application form.
That would be the compliance.
A compliance permit application form. Application, fee, and all other supporting materials.
Okay, hold on, can you cover that slowly so we can get it in a minute?
It's the application, I think, okay, the reason why I didn't spell it out, because F, the title of section F is application for preliminary certificate of compliance. So we're all, we're talking about that, so that's what I meant.
But now we're in G.
Yeah, now we're G.
But we're still talking about.
It's not far back. I mean, if we had two words that are, I don't think it's gonna hurt, it's gonna.
That's fine, I think the whole, the intent of that section is to make sure that it's filed with the administrator or the designee, not the township clerk, which is the existing ordinance was saying. So the application, the compliance permit application form and related materials with the fee shall be filed with the township. Okay, sorry, Martha, I was saying so. A compliance permit application form, comma.
Hold on, she's, she's writing.
Fee. And all other supporting materials shall be filed with the township zoning administrator or its designee.
Application fee?
Yes, application.
So you're removing, it's paired on the question.
Scratch the whole thing, I'm ready to do one. You're not gonna be able to edit that.
No. So we keep.
A compliance permit application form, comma, application fee, comma, and all other supporting materials shall be filed with the township zoning administrator or its designee.
That works. Thank you for that clarification. Good. On the H. Nothing changed there?
They're all in system language, but if there's anything you feel like complex, revise it. I did add subparings to that language, but language is.
Anybody else have anything on H? Anybody else have anything on H? Anything on R? No. Anything on J?
Question, second line.
On R?
On J. Second line, for preliminary certificates of zoning compliance and amendments.
Are you speaking into the microphone?
The here too, at the end of the sentence. What does that mean?
There too?
There too, sorry, there too. Can we just say preliminary certificates for both zoning compliance and amendments after filing? Or is that there to mean something? I'm gonna have to guess.
Sounds like a legal word.
Yeah, probably because I was pretty good if I could.
Maybe we should leave it to the attorney, he hasn't given it to us yet.
Well, if we're gonna give it to the attorney, then we put it back in.
He'll charge us for it if we take it off and puts it back in.
So it just means in relation to the thing before, is that what it means?
Yeah, there too means amendments that followed the, you know, original application, there too. Any amendments that are directly original application.
I think we let the lawyers have that.
As a memory.
Good with it, believe in K.
I'm fine, I just didn't know what it meant.
K, approval, no, not K, that's K, K in the document. Approvals. Any comments?
A consistency thing, so I like the headings, but number one doesn't have a heading. Do you wanna add one, or?
There's no holes.
There's no holes at the beginning of that one.
I know, the ice drops there. I can probably just say general compliance.
I have another suggestion. Just drop the holes.
Oh, no, my mind wouldn't work.
Oh, okay.
I sort of like it.
I feel like, right, but it's the bold stuff kind of makes me navigate.
So what are we calling it?
General compliance.
People okay with that, old thing? Sure. Under site inspection, how do you determine optional, they got optional? You'd edit that, right?
Yes, I added that, oh, yeah, that is... Oh, no, I only added blue, oh, sorry, I only added the word optional. Yeah, I think I only added the word, I only made it optional, not a requirement.
So in the text, it says if required.
Yeah.
So that's not really optional.
Okay. So first, I have K two. Okay, so... It's on page nineteen. Item D. This is not a shell standard revised to optional if required. So, yes, I did add the word if required. That was the language that was carried over.
This is how hard line drawing in standards is, just something somebody's got an opinion on. The word optional.
What it translates, the existing language on page nineteen requires that the site inspection should be completed.
Right. So are we taking the word optional, now you have that? What, they, she does do site inspections, doesn't have all the names out there. People outside used to say shell. Yeah. Why don't you do them all the time?
I do it if things are close to the setback line. I wanna make sure, you know, they're doing okay, but if it's a large lot, I don't do it. Because we do...
Well, then, just, as somebody pointed out, in the text, it says if required. She added that too. That's what I mean, so take out the word optional. If you put if required in the paragraph, it, you've got it covered, it's already optional.
Right, because if I, if that's required, that will delay the time it takes to issue a compliance form.
Right, so just drop the word optional and leave the if required in the paragraph, correct?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Anything else, number two? Have you got a period? Okay, good.
Does it number K three in section, should that be cannibalized?
Yes. Anybody else got anything in section three? Section four, or number three, rather. Number four, K four? Makes sense to me? Everybody good? Now, a little bit of approval?
I have a question. What does that last part mean? A certificate issued contrary to the terms of this ordinance shall be void. What would that mean?
That if a certificate was issued in error.
In error.
In error.
For whatever reason.
For whatever reasons, it could be something...
Information not true.
Information not true, or it could be because the private road permits, you know, if some, you know, somebody missed out on the planning standard, then they shall be void. I think that's the intent, why the attorneys have put that in there before. And that also is consistent with how things are. Because the general, the expectation on paper is that when somebody applies for a permit and when they were told, you know, these are the requirements you need to comply with, both of them should have an, you know, understanding of what the requirements are. Especially when it deals with site plans, you know, a professional engineer should be able to meet his own ordinance.
Thank you.
I think that's where it came from.
So no other questions on L? M? Seeing none, M? Seeing nothing in that one, on the other, on page twenty nine? Seeing no changes, on the P, amendments? I don't have anything anybody else know, on the Q, revocation? I have a word. And I may be wrong. Should there, at the end of the first line, the zoning administrator may revoke a preliminary certificate of zoning compliance? In the case, or in case? I grew up writing the word the in there. Doesn't really matter to me, but...
Yeah, I think so.
The indicates. So we're adding the word the? Thank you. Nothing else in Q? R? Unless it rains in the machine. Now, on to S? Just out of curiosity, did the type or size change there? Or is it plain, joke out of my eyes? The compliance for the planned application.
I can check the word out, but for me, it's all...
It looks smaller.
It does.
By a notch, doesn't it?
You think it's different from the other?
I think it's a different size. I think like, I think like one is twelve and the other's like a hand.
Yeah.
Look at the L, that little L, is it five, something changed or something? Don't want to hang you there, but I don't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, you're right.
That was the wrong.
This is insane.
Yeah, I see that word the same, I think it's just a heading.
Wait, you gotta look at it.
Yeah, maybe, it's smaller.
I have to let the lawyer look at it. Oh, I'm sorry. We're okay with the type size, I think.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you. T, starting construction. We talked about this one earlier, I don't think there should be any changes at this point, correct? U, maintenance?
I wanted to say something in context.
On T or U?
U. I've received a couple of ground solar permit applications recently, like a couple of four or five. The constant challenge with that application is trying to explain to them that you have to screen it from edges and properties and the street, which is what the ordinance says. The ordinance is very clear on the type of opacity and, you know, what kind of screening is required. But it's just one of those things like, why do I need a fence around a swimming pool? Under the discussion with applicants. No, it's a large lot.
One is safety, one is not.
Right. But the requirement is there. So because it only talks about opacity and not specifically says you have to use evergreen trees, or, you know, it did make a reference to the landscape section. And one of the applicant came up and said, I'm gonna plant these giant lilac bushes that provides the same screening in all seasons. I said, you know, put them closer to each other and make sure they are at five feet height by the time of planting, and I've given them some guidance to help them grow that stuff. And then when I went to do the site inspection, because he was adding on to an existing ground solar, he was adding more panels to it, I said, you know, then you have to extend your screening. But then I went to the site inspection and I realized that plans he planted died when he installed the ground solar two years ago. And when I looked through the ordinance and then I realized we don't have anything in the ordinance that says you have to maintain them to keep, you know, we have in the ordinance that says you can't add on to stuff without permits, you cannot construct anything without permits. If it's not in compliance, it's not valid anymore, but no reference to maintenance. That's where that came in here. But the ground solar screening is just something to keep, I'm gonna keep an eye on it. But every one that came so far, it's always a balance of work, challenge. And then they end up planting a couple of evergreen trees, but there's no way of checking if they're watered in, if the screening is intact, or...
So how would you enforce this, you?
I cannot enforce it, I can only issue a permit if they show plants on the plan. I see, you know, plans on the plan, when I go to issue the final certificate of compliance, I make sure that they planted the plants. But are the plants growing, or are they providing the screening down the line? Unless we get a complaint, there's no way to check.
But this makes more sense.
Right, at least this way I can say, hey, you need to maintain it to keep your permit valid.
Is this overreach?
That is definitely a good question. And that's, and then why the screening for ground solar?
And I don't mean that by your initial, the initial topic. I mean it by, like, right now, you just said, because you saw something, meaning the dead trees, then you're gonna keep an eye on it, but it's not a complaint.
No, I'm not keeping an eye on it.
No, that's what you said.
No, no, okay, let me clarify. When I say I'm gonna keep an eye on it, I meant the number of ground solar permit applications I'm getting because people are always challenging the screening requirement, not that particular property or that screen.
That's why I said that.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it was just a visual thing. I think people wanted it screened so that other people, their neighbors, couldn't see it.
Right.
Right? That was the reason.
That was the reason, that's exactly the reason, that like, my neighbor's hundred feet away, or do I have to screen, or... But I'm not questioning the part of it, but the context was mostly that.
Well, it's a tough topic because to have perpetuity, you know, I mean, you can sit here and whatever this, but you have plants that grow and they grow for ten years, and then the thunderstorm comes and knocks the trees down, so it's not covered anymore. So, you know, it just, it, it...
Okay, to the question, George.
Well, and that's, it's...
No, I get it, but then we should then consider the standard. Because tree, like, okay, let's say I said I'm gonna have the landscape maintenance for La Fonde. That's a site plan, so the maintenance is kind of tied into the development use agreement. But if it's not part of the development agreement, then there's nothing in the ordinance that says you have to keep your, you know, maintain the facilities, so...
I like the perpetuity. Whether it's trees along the road, you could say the same thing about trees that are maintained along the road, or somebody, whether it's this or anything else.
Or we can say in perpetuity, or until the proposed use is abandoned, or, you know, I don't know.
That's what I was gonna ask the question, you have all improvements now, you have to find an improvement. If I put a solar panel in, is that considered just a solar panel, is that an improvement? Okay, so you're telling me I gotta maintain a solar panel in perpetuity?
No, I'm not, I meant, yeah.
Raise the language, all improvements shall be maintained perpetuity. I put a solar panel in, I'm stuck for life. I can develop it, even though it's nowhere else in ten years or fifteen years, so...
I'm...
That's not the way you're trying to do it.
Right, right.
But I think this language needs to be changed.
Change.
So management wants to do it.
Right, but that's why I was explaining the context, because that's what I was trying to get at. Like, if you have received an approval based on this condition, you know, you received the approval for this because you said you're gonna do this, and if you...
Just gonna say, shouldn't it just say all conditions of approval should be maintained? Yeah? I mean, that's exactly what it is, it's, you're getting approved, this, under this condition, you're getting approved, you need to maintain that condition. The intent is that that's what the condition's there for, so...
And the person signed off on it, so you've got a binding agreement.
Yes.
I'll be right back and bring it back.
Okay. Thank you, good evening. Section three point eight five inspections. What? I think you and Rick are out of control over here. Silent water, silent water runs deep.
Still running deep.
Yeah. That's what I mean, those two, you know, there's gonna be a period, she's gonna catch it somewhere.
There? After that, I don't know.
Anyway, type of inspections. Most of this is pay up, correct, Ray?
Yes.
Does anybody have comments on A one two four two? Seeing none. Further than page. I do have a question on D. And again, it's just specificity. A final inspection shall occur prior to commencement of use. Who is making that final inspection?
Uh, us.
Do we wanna specify that here?
So the two says a final inspection. By the township zoning, I, I think if we just put it at the beginning.
Yeah.
That should cover all four.
What?
On, on page twenty-nine, item two, final inspection. What if we just say a final inspection by the township zoning administrator?
Where? How do you begin?
Uh, section three point eight five, on page twenty-nine, item two.
A two.
A two.
Okay, A two.
Final inspection.
By the township. Then we need to take it out of the rest of them. How, how are they?
Oh, okay.
Why don't you just put it in D?
I'll revise that for consistency.
That's, that's two words to add in D, doesn't require modifications anywhere else.
Okay.
Final inspection by the zoning administrator, township zoning administrator. Or does it need?
Right, uh, I think I can, I'll just, I get the point, I will, when I come to bring it back, I'll revise it for consistency.
Okay.
Though I'm not repeating the word every line.
Sounds good, thank you. Inspections. Are you gonna revise that for consistency also, so we're not saying the zoning administrator every other word?
Right, exactly. Uh, the scheduling inspections, I think that's green, kind of. I did change that to within five days from the date planned of scheduling. That was new.
It's gonna be right.
Right.
Is five good for you?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody else good with that then?
We are doing it within two, between me and Shell, but. It's good to have the buffer.
Five working days is standard. Yep. Uh, I'm just, for my part, that's five township working days. Not Friday.
Yes.
Okay. Section three point nine.
I can come through the green.
Let me make a comment here, excuse me for interrupting. Uh, seeing as Alex coming up on ten o'clock. And we have some other things to address briefly. Just discussion things. Do we want to move on and continue this at our next meeting? Because we have about five or six pages left, and a lot of it is green and blue. Sri can bring back the revisions we've had so far, and we'll pick up with section three point nine at our next meeting.
Yes. Can we only do the things that are truly urgent and short?
Yes.
The rest of the agenda? Because we could delay those two.
They are, they are. I think they are short if we make them short. So since we have new business, we have agreed to continue on section three point nine at our next meeting. No new business, discussions items. Sri, I was in the same meeting as you, would you please give a debate on the pre-application?
I think I can, I can give it short, so we had, uh, Peter from, uh, Historic Historical Society submitted, uh. A draft of what the vision is, what the plan is, why they would like to amend the special use amendment. We had a pre-application meeting, me, Tom, Mike, Peter, and Rick. Rick was coming on behalf of Historical Society. Uh, we went over the list of things, there were a lot of things that are not clear. And then we discussed a path as what the planning commission would be looking when they come to the planning commission. Gave her a list of items that she needs to revise. I still owe her an email with some specifics on the list of revisions to be made. But then we also made it very clear that whatever she brings back to the planning commission has to be approved by the Historical Society Board. To make sure that, you know, all board members are in agreement with what's being proposed, because. Some are very creative users, uh, that were in the memo, so we, we made it very clear that. The Historical Society, uh, the board should approve every, everything that's proposed in their application, so. They'll take time, but they are working towards it.
So that's your day, there partisan recommendation plan, any update?
Yes, so please, please do spread the word, get people through the survey. Uh, we did a point three part and, uh, part and, uh, members to the Parks and Recreation Committee. Uh, we have our next meeting on August fourteenth, where we would present an update on what has been done so far and what the plan is moving forward. Um, at that day, at that meeting, we will decide whether we're gonna have the open house on August twenty-eighth or early September. Depending on how many responses we get the survey, that will impact the open house date, so.
Thank you for that, um. Masterplanted implementation matrix, it's in your packet. The item that we have been sort of moving out is in green on here.
No, um, so the things that we've completed are in orange.
Right.
So those are the ones that, um, have recently been adopted, so maybe I misunderstood you.
No, what I said was, the thing we have yet to do is green.
Correct.
Article sixteen, so. This applies to the next discussion, which is our next meeting agenda. So we have three point nine O. Sri, do you think the panelists and sort of this will come forward by then?
Uh, please, so.
Okay, there's a chance.
Users. That meant like, we, we need to have a, a group meeting and then. Um. Yes. I wanna say most likely yes, because we, I have six meetings in August. Between ZBA and Parks and Rec, planning commission, special board meeting, and board meeting.
I don't think we should say no.
I'd say no.
And that gets me to the green section, do we now bring this forward and add it to our agenda?
But for that, we also need a sub-team to meet.
I, I know.
Before we can bring it to the agenda.
August is really tight.
So we should not.
September, three, so.
I, we, we have to have a meeting.
I understand that.
So no, there's neither of those.
We'll have a lighter August PC meeting.
Oh, we still have three point nine O, it's logged through.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and we don't have any public hearings coming out. So we'll have all business, just section three, article three, right? Do you think D is gonna have anything by then? Okay? Well, we never know. Well, okay, thank you. Uh, any public comments at this point in the evening? Is this a board comment or a PC comment?
PC comment, based on the, uh, instruction from folks that were here this evening. Just a few notes from that, one of the biggest takeaways I had listening to that conversation, the training about animal welfare. Is that basically these processes are already being handled by the state and the county. If anybody in which township.